Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the January 13th, 2020 Village Board of Trustees Meeting. Will everyone please stand for the rise of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Ling.
Present.
Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luise.
Present. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting of the new year and the new decade. And tonight, we're going to begin our meeting with some appointments. First one is going to be appointing Kaylee McCrink, who is a student of Tuckahoe High School, to the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee to a term ending May 31st, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And our second appointment is appointing Maria Capazzo, who is a student of East Chester High School, to the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee to a term ending May 31st, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And our third appointment is appointing Deborah Delgrasso as the Deputy Village Treasurer as per the employment letter dated January 7th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And our last appointment is appointing William Williams Jr. as Building Inspector, Facilities Manager, as per the employment letter dated January 2nd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Yes, we're good. I am good. Yes. Now that we've gone through those appointments, first, I would just like to congratulate the two students that are now part of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. I applaud you for this volunteerism that you have exhibited. You are part of a brand-new committee that was just formed here in the village, and it's on the cutting edge of environmental issues. And we are now, as you probably know, just beginning the food recycling program. So you will have the same voting rights and interest in this committee, as well as any of the adults on this committee. And I'm sure you are both going to do a fine job on there and bring new ideas to this as well. I'm going to give you all an opportunity to speak to the board. I just would like to address one other issue. Williams Williams Jr. is not the son of Bill Williams. It is the original Williams Williams Jr., who... Took me a long time to realize that, but anyway, William Williams. But anyway, he is retired, but he will be working as a part-time Building Inspector, Facilities Manager. Until such time, we hire a full-time inspector, and then Mr. Williams will assist in the transition of the office. So with that being said, would any of our new appointees to the Environmental Committee would like to make a statement? This is... We would welcome to hear from you at this time.
I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I hope I can contribute a lot to this board.
I assure you will. Thank you. Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Maria?
Yeah, I want to thank all you guys for giving me this opportunity, and I can't wait to help you guys and make a difference.
Thank you. Again, I thank you both of you for stepping up to take on this role with the committee. Donald Crosby.
Very happy about these two appointments, and I am really looking forward to working with them, because I know they're going to have a lot of ideas, and they have a lot of energy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, the website name for our committee is t-e-s-c-tuckahoe.org. Please access the site. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Donald. And just another point I'd just like to make, the appointment of Deborah Delgrasso as the Deputy Village Treasurer. That is a part-time position that is being filled. And next, we're going to move on to our presentations, and we will receive a report from Jeffrey C. Shaver, who's a CPA and a partner at PKF O'Connor &amp; Davies. You're welcome, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Board of Trustees, my name is Jeff Shaver. I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor &amp; Davies. I'm here to present you the audit results for the fiscal year ended May 31st, 2009 for the Village of Tuckahoe. I'll start with the auditor's opinion, which is directly after the table of contents in the financial statements. And in that opinion, we say, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the village as of May 31st, 2019, and the respective changes in financial position and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." This is what's referred to as a clean auditor's opinion, or in auditing, we call it an unmodified opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. So that's the first and foremost thing I wanted to say. What that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with accounting principles in the United States of America. With that, I'll move right into the general fund, results of operations. If you're following along in the financial statements, it's pages 53 and 54. This is the general fund comparative schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, or column presentation, 2019 results on page 53, and 2018 results on page 54. When the budget was initially adopted, it was anticipated that $12,738,000 in revenues would be collected. Actual revenues for the year were $12,900,000. That represents a positive budgetary surplus of about $162,000. How did you achieve that? There were some positives and negatives on the revenue side of the budget. Some fees taken in from the parking lots were less than budget by roughly $70,000. On the positive side, licenses and permits were greater than budget by approximately $173,000. That was the largest single positive variance for the year. And miscellaneous income was about $78,000 greater than the budget. Some of those three together is the majority of how you achieve the budgetary variance of $162,000. When the expenditures were initially budgeted at about $12 million, and that doesn't include the transfers to the Library Fund, actual expenditures for the year were $11,941,000. That's approximately $58,000 less than the adopted budget. You didn't underspend or overspend in any one category. You didn't move funds around throughout the year to cover over-expended items and from under-expended items, but the net impact was zero to the budget, and you ended up underspending all the departments in total by that $58,000. So kind of, I would say, you're managing the budget somewhat on the tight side. You don't have a lot of excess appropriations there, but you were able to meet the budget, which is certainly a positive thing. When you take the revenue surplus that I mentioned and the expenditure surplus, add them together, you have a total budgetary surplus of about $276,000. Because when the village adopts its budget, it doesn't utilize any... Hasn't utilized any fund balance to balance the budget. All that budgetary surplus increases fund balance directly. So your fund balance goes up by that same amount. So you started the year with $2,114,000 of general fund fund balance. You're ending the year $2,389,000. So certainly a positive year for the village. And that's a similar increase to what was achieved in 2018. So that's the general fund fund balance as of May 31st, 2019. The only other thing I'll say about that, in the case of the village, it's all what we refer to as unassigned fund balance, which means it has no legal restrictions on it, and none of it has been assigned for specific uses. It's all available for use at the discretion of the board. So that's a key thing to keep in mind. I'll take you briefly through the Capital Projects Fund project length schedule, if you're following along in the book, pages 63 and 64. This is the status of all the capital projects from inception to date. You can see total authorized projects, $2,318,000. Actual expenditures cumulative were just about $1 million. So you have $1.3 million left as of May 31st, 2019 to spend. That's because there was a bond issued during 2019, and those funds hadn't completely been spent during May 31st, 2019. I'd imagine by this point, you know, half a year into the new year, you've spent down quite a bit of that into those capital projects. But you can see, I won't talk specifically about any of them, but you can see all the detailed capital projects here on this schedule. I'd also just like to highlight the long-term liabilities. The general fund is accounted for under modified accrual basis of accounting, so we don't... It doesn't account for any long-term liabilities. When you issue debt, that's tracked and accounted for separately. So the bonded debt outstanding was $5.5 million at the beginning of the year. You issued $1,424,000 for new projects that I mentioned. You paid down $502,000, leaving the end in bonds payable at $6.4 million. You also have a compensated absences liability. That's vacation and sick time for village employees that'll be paid out when they retire. That's just about $600,000. You have a net pension liability of $2 million. That's assigned... That's allocated to the village by the state pension plan. So that's just information that comes down from the state, and any shortfalls in the pension plan will be funded through the actuarially determined contribution rates that, you know, you pay every year. So it's just gonna... You won't ever have to pay that directly. You just keep on paying your bill as it comes. The big number on the page, and this is an accounting change for May 31st, 2019, relates to the other post-employment benefit obligations, which is the value of health insurance for current and retirees. The old accounting method allowed for the village and all municipalities to take in the total liability related to that OPEB over 30 years. So it was a smaller number, and it was kind of growing over those 30 years. That number was $9.7 million. The new accounting standard said you can't amortize it over 30 years anymore. You have to take it all in as a liability right away, to show the whole liability. That number at the beginning of the year was about $32.4 million. So we went from a $9.7 million liability to a $32 million liability just because of this accounting change. Keep in mind that nothing in reality has changed. You're still paying your retirees on a pay-as-you-go basis, you know, the health insurance, but this is an accounting change. And that number is going to change every year as the actuarial assumptions are updated and, you know, new people come on, you know, deceased come off, and that sort of thing. Head counts go up and down. The number at the end of the year of the liability is $31.3 million. So that's the actuarially determined value of the health insurance for current and former retirees. Is there any questions on that? I know that's a confusing one. I just wanted to highlight it because it was an accounting change for this year. Hopefully, you know, it becomes more familiar as time goes by. And just keep in mind that there's no trust mechanism for the village to fund this liability. So there's not... Unfortunately, there's not much you can do. You can't set aside fund balance to fund it. You're doing already everything you can do, which is pay the bill as it comes due. The only way to decrease that liability would be to ask for more contributions from retirees, or, you know, to modify the benefits that are provided. So that's kind of where that stands. With that said, that's all I had prepared. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have on anything in the financial statements. I just tried to hit a few of the highlights as to not overwhelm the board and the community.
If I may, if you could just explain to the community the ultimate benefit of the village not utilizing the general fund to balance the budget, which I know some municipalities, school boards have, you know, we read about it being done. Again, just in layman's terms for the residents of the village, how significant, if it is, that we do do that or we're able to do that?
So there's plenty of reasons why you don't want to just continue to draw on that fund balance. I think the most important, at least from my point of view, would be the slippery slope. When you start to take money from fund balance to balance your budget, you have to generate that surplus just to break even every year. And it's very easy just to say, "Oh, let's appropriate more fund balance." And then, you know, all of a sudden, two or three years in, you're appropriating a large amount of fund balance, and now you're left, you know... It ultimately leads to a deficit-type position. So that'd be the number-one reason, I'd say. It's just the road you don't want to go down. It's fiscally prudent not to do it if you don't have to do it. Or if you do do it, it should be for one-time, non-recurring issues that aren't going to come up every year. If you're having a structural imbalance, you should try to resolve it some other way rather than just take from fund balance every year, because ultimately, it's going to catch up. It also helps with liquidity. The more fund balance you have, the more cash you're going to have. So you don't have to worry about short-term borrowings, so that, you know, short-term borrowings cost money. The more fund balance you have, it's looked upon favorably by the rating agencies. I know before you issued your last bond this past fiscal year, you were upgraded by Standard and Poor's, and one of the things they noted in that report was, "Hey, they have a strong fund balance." So if you start drawing down on that fund balance, your bond rating could come down, and that could increase your borrowing cost.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sounds good. Anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaver.
Thank you. Thank you to David and the new treasurer you have. It's always a clean audit, and I look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess, based on what we just heard from Mr. Shaver, I think our Treasury Department and our department heads are due a round of applause for maintaining this tight budget, as you referred to, and keeping things in line. So thank you to all the department heads and the Treasury Department. So now, we will move on now to our public hearings, which is considering a proposed local law prohibiting the sale of electronic nicotine delivery products in the Village of Tuckahoe. This public hearing has been open for several months now. We have not yet made a determination on which way we're going to approach this law based on the litigation that's being taken place in Yonkers, New York City, and I believe also on the federal level. So we want to get a ruling or get rulings from these other jurisdictions before we pass the law there by minimizing our liability or making us have to go into court to defend our ordinance. So we're going to keep that law open, that public hearing open. It's an opportunity at this point in time for anyone in the audience, if they would like to offer any comments about this proposed law. Okay, with that being said, we will, again, as I said, we will keep this local law open and this public hearing open. So I will make a motion to keep this public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second. In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that will bring us to the adoption of minutes of the December 9th, 2019 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Ling.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And at this time, this is the first opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on agenda items.
Hello, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street. I thought about this based on what was said in November regarding the election issue, about doing it in November or keeping it in March, and a couple of things I just wanted to bring out that I think might be apropos. One is that, from the standpoint of a new elected official coming in to being a trustee in March, when the election is done, they already have to deal with the budget, which is difficult for someone new. So I think timing is something to consider. It would be better, in my opinion, to have a little more time for that newly-elected official to be able to understand the budget, because at that point, you just got elected, and here's the budget, and you're like, "Ugh." So that's one thing. Second thing is, some of the concerns from the November meeting were valid regarding local issues versus national and state issues. Unfortunately, national issues are starting to affect us, or did affect us a lot this year with assault issue, also things like the bail issue, the problem we're going to have with the budget that New York State has. That's going to affect what gets dumped on us. So that's a state issue and a national issue, but it's a local issue. And the more education, I think, that voters have on that, the better. So maybe a compromise would be having the caucuses start earlier. Maybe it's in the beginning of January. That gives you almost two months to have an election. Second option is to bring it to the voters. And the third option is to keep it as it is, but I think it's worth considering some sort of compromise, because I think the real issue here is timing. Do we have enough time? Things are getting more complicated. Not because of us, we're not doing anything more complicated, but our friends in Albany and our friends in DC are being more complicated to us. So I think it would behoove the voters. I mean, we know what's going on with the demographics. At least Chester has more registered Democrats, whatever. I don't... That doesn't even affect me. I don't care, because it doesn't matter to me personally, whether it's a Democrat or Republican. Just have the voters have more time. So that's my thought on that.
Thank you, Mike. Yes. I'm sorry? Well, it's on the agenda, so...
Margarita Clement, I've been working as an election inspector for 15 years. I work over at East Chester Middle School. And just in my opinion, as an election inspector, I don't know the budget issues, but it would be very confusing for most of the people, and especially seniors. And believe me, they vote... They come in on voting day, no matter what, no matter what kind of weather there is. For it to have the voting for our trustees at the same time as we're going to vote for our president, I really would like to keep it the same. It's been working, and if it isn't broken, don't fix it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Adam Radbell. I live on Dante Avenue in Tuckahoe. My family's been here eight years, and we love this community. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the mayor and the board. I respectfully disagree a little bit with the last comment, although I get it. It is important to be able to have... To know when you have to show up to vote. I think when we moved here eight years ago, we didn't even understand there was an election in March. It was only some neighbors telling us that. That got us to realize what we had to do, and then we had to prepare and read about what we were going to vote for. I think it's always better to take the course of action that will encourage all of us, all of the eligible voters, to participate in this process, because we're all better off if more people engage in the process and if all of you hear from us more often. There was an earlier conversation about trying to use cutting-edge ideas and new technology and new ideas. And I think while it's very comfortable to keep things the way they are, it might be a great idea to have the election... Have everybody know, because they already know they have to vote in November, to have all of the election done at that time. Everybody can prepare. Everybody will know. There are no... I don't want to say there are no excuses, but everybody expects it, and it will be probably easier. And I suspect most of the residents in Tuckahoe probably would agree with that if they had a chance to express it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hi.
Hello.
Again, my name is Kara Cronin. I live on Maple Avenue, 88 Maple Avenue. I just wanted to speak to Ms. Clement's comments. As I've said before, I'd like to reiterate, I think it's insulting to the intelligence of people. In this case, we're talking about senior citizens who have lived a very long time, some of them, to imply that they are not able or capable of making decisions because of their age or because of whatever reason. My mother just is 75. She just spent a month living in a yurt in Mongolia. Senior citizens are very capable people. They can figure out who's on a ballot and who they'd like to vote for. If we are thinking that they can't, then the easier option actually would be to move the election to November, where all the elections would happen at one time. That would actually be the easier thing to do if we're going to be considerate of people who are more vulnerable. With that being said, I'd like to reiterate my support for moving the elections to November, and just say again that ultimately, I think this should be up to the people. There should be a democratic process. People should be given the choice. If they don't want it, then so be it. But if they want it, then this is something that they should be allowed to choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you all for your service to us. So I guess one question I have...
Name, please, and address?
It's Grace Baldwin, 14 Westview in Tuckahoe. One question I have is, I'm wondering why there's such a big question about whether or not we have a referendum? Is it... Like, is... What is involved that... Why is it just not a given that we would put that... The question of it to the people to vote on? And I'm trying to understand, is it something about the process? Is there...
It would be the process, yes. That's correct.
And what is it, like, in particular, that makes it so onerous?
Well, it's not. We have yet to... This is why this is at the discussion phase right now. So it's not that it's onerous. We're looking for feedback from the community right now. So, I mean, you want me to detail the process? The motion could be put forward that we put a resolution on that we would change the elections from March to November, and then at that point, it still would go on a referendum for the voters of Tuckahoe to decide. If the board so decides either which way, to move the elections or not to move the elections, then again, it would be, as you said, it would be a process to get signatures collected, and then it would be on the ballot as a referendum.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would just like to speak in favor of moving them to November. I think that November is a month that people do think of in connection with voting. Granted, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how it's primarily, at this point, on the national level. I have really appreciated hearing the different points of view of various people on both sides. I don't see that discussion disappearing. Some people have said that we'll lose our identity, we'll lose this conversation. I think that people that are interested and express... I think that people that are interested and express, that's not going to change, it's their personality, it's their passion. And I think personally, that the more people are involved, and I think people do feel like they have more power locally if they know the people involved, because they're, they're geographically, they're physically closer, there's more connection personally. And I think that just getting the vote to more people of all parties is really what it's all about. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Sarah Wood, fifty Lawrence Avenue. This time, I wrote down what I wanted to say, because I get nervous when I stand up here and I forget what I want to say. But I'm somebody who's interested in politics, and I always have been. And I moved here about four years ago from Brooklyn with my family. And one of the things that instantly appealed to me about this community is that I felt like I could be involved with local politics, and I could know who my politicians were, and they were accessible to me in the process, as we see as accessible. You can come, and you can participate. So I really love that you can have a say, and you can have an impact in Tuckahoe, and you, you feel that right away when you move here, or at least I did. But one thing that I see as I continue to stay involved in politics and as the years tick by, is I realize that I see a lot of the same faces. I don't see a lot of the new, of new faces at meetings, political meetings or board meetings. Tonight is a welcome kind of change to that. I see people I've never seen before, but a lot of times, it's the same, same characters. And I think that's important to recognize, especially when we have to acknowledge that our voter turnout is very low. The estimate that I would put it at is about thirty-five percent of registered voters turn out for a March election. And I don't think that's something we should really be proud of or feel comfortable about. So what it says to me is that we have a system that favors people who are in the know, and people who are established in the community. And it favors people who have the time and the means to make that system work for them. And I feel like what we need is a system that works not just for the fortunate few, but for the most possible people. So it makes me feel, as somebody who's political and involved, that I have a responsibility to get more other people involved, so they can share in that feeling that I have, of the feeling of being counted and of having a voice. Because without their involvement, I would have to conclude that the system's not fair, that somehow those people are being excluded from taking part in their own government, because it's not set up to include them, and it's not working for them. So I'm here to advocate for the voters of Tuckahoe, the thirty-five percent who typically make it to the polls in March, but mostly for the sixty-five percent who don't. For the thirty-five percent who usually do vote in March, let's assume that they have lives, jobs, families, and friends that make it possible for them to do that. They're able to go to work late or leave early, they have sitters or families to watch their kids, they're able to drive themselves, or they're retired, and it's less of an issue for them, as long as the weather isn't too terrible. They can vote in March as well as November, in addition to November, because their lives allow for that. And I say, good for them. But for the sixty-five percent who don't typically vote in March, let's assume that they fall into several other categories. It's possible that on that very one singular day of the year, they cannot go to work late, or they cannot come home early. Maybe they have nobody to watch their kids. Maybe they have older parents to look after, or they don't have cars, and they can't make it that day. Maybe the weather is such that they're not able or comfortable to drive on that one day. Let's imagine that they're not able to plan ahead and get an absentee ballot. This doesn't make them lazy, and it doesn't mean that they don't deserve to vote. And it doesn't make their vote less important or valid. We, as part of the thirty-five percent, don't get to decide that they should try harder. We, as the thirty-five percent, should instead consider, why is the number so low? And what can be done to improve it? It's a responsibility that we share as people who can consider others and not just ourselves. So let's not think less of these people. Let's not exclude them, let's not blame them. Instead, let's encourage the possibility of them participating, and let's try for something better. There are several ways to improve voter turnout, that I know of. One is early voting, which we have in November, but not in March. Another is to consolidate elections. And for those opposed to changing the election, to coincide with what is typically called Election Day on the calendar, what other ideas are being put forward to improve turnout? Because I haven't heard any. If we, as a village with very low turnout, are interested in having representative governance, we should allow this decision to be made by the voters in the village, by as many people as possible, so that it accurately reflects us. If the board is against having the voters decide this, we must ask why. We have seen at the hearings, the public hearings, the discussion, that there are opinions, both pro and con, so obviously putting the issue to a vote seems like the next step. So I respectfully suggest that the village voters decide this issue, and I ask the board to put it on a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Trustees. I've heard a lot of emotional.
Name, please.
Excuse me?
Name and address.
Alberto Beldecerra. I reside at sixty-one Circuit Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York. I've heard a lot of emotional pleas, I've heard a lot of opinions, mine's going to be an opinion as well. However, I think what we all agree on is the fact that in the end, the voters should decide, most likely, and I think that happens already, and sometimes I think that people get carried away with their hyperbole. I just want to add that. Now I want to read my prepared statement. My one observation regarding the idea of moving the village election to November from March. I had the privilege of running for office last March. During that campaign, I knocked on well over a thousand doors. I introduced myself, had lengthy conversations with many of our residents. For the most part, residents were concerned about the quality of life issues that we all face, and people are looking for a safe community, paved roads, new sidewalks, lower taxes. The one thing that never came up, never, was moving the election. Not one person asked me or suggested that we should move the election from March to November. However, now it's become the central, most important issue, it appears, looking at the board meetings. So, I believe that we should keep the focus on the needs of the village, and I think all we have to do is look at the track record of our board the past eight years, and the report we got from the accountant earlier, audited results showing that Tuckahoe is being run very effectively. Okay? So we should focus on lowering the taxes. We should focus on taking less bonds for our local residents to later pay back. Instead of speaking on issues that really don't affect local, such as New York State's new bail reform legislation, and divisive national politics. I'm a registered independent. I ran for the board as a Democrat back in the nineties, and as a Republican last year. Okay? I would like to live in a village where people get along. When I grew up, I had respect for everyone on the board, regardless of the party they were in, and there were civil discussions without hidden agendas. So let's keep it simple, let's focus on local issues. Again, local issues such as taxes and quality of life. The counterpoint to my argument is that it's easier for residents, and it gets out more voters. Again, this isn't something that I heard one time knocking on over a thousand doors. I don't understand where this issue came from, and therefore, it makes me doubt its authenticity. So all due respect, that's my opinion, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
One, one point, where we're saying that local issues in the village will not be affected by the New York criminal justice reform, that's not true. And I'm sure our chief could explain to you in great detail how that is going to affect our budget. So I just wanted to make that point.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Eamonn Goine, one thirty-five Oakland Avenue. I came here for the environmental committee thing, but I saw Alberto came and talked about when he was campaigning, and just want to talk about that, because, you know, I also campaigned when he did, and I also knocked on a thousand doors, I think more than that. And one thing I did observe is, many people did not know that we have elections in March. And they were like, what, we have elections in March? We don't know about it. And the older folks did, but there are a lot of new people in, in Tuckahoe, and they were, they didn't know. So I had to go and educate them and tell them where it is. So there is this problem. I mean, he might not have heard it, but I did. A lot of people had no idea we had elections in March. And I guess, you know, people think elections in November. But the other thing that I, you know, when I was campaigning, I had folks from, a lot of people helped me in the campaign, and it was a great experience, I got to meet a lot of people. I have a couple of anecdotes, you know, things that happened to me that I remember, and left a mark on me. There was this guy who was on wheelchair, right, and he came, I think, far away to help, and it was snowy and icy, but he kept on, and he tried to, you know, keep on, keep up with me, go to people, talk to people, because he was very, he was fiercely independent, and he wouldn't take any help. So, you know, a couple of times, his wheelchair stuck, and then in the end, he just had to go home, because the battery died. So in most cases, with this elderly lady, and we were campaigning, and she slipped, and she fell, right? And, and she had a spin, she didn't come, and, you know, for the rest of the season, campaign season. So the point I'm trying to make is, having elections in, in winter, even when it's snowing and icy, puts up a barrier for people with disability and elderly people to participate, and that's something that I was sort of not happy with. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Virginia Marciano, twenty-one S. Circle in Tuckahoe. At the risk of being completely redundant, I made a couple of notes over the last couple of months. Couple of things. One of the things that makes our village what it is, is our autonomy, and being able to discuss things independently, and, you know, take care of our village independently, of getting mired into county, state, and federal politics. We've already been over the cost of the election, it's just, it's negligible, that's not even an issue. The duration of the campaign does concern me. If we move it to November, we're going to have a great big turnover in when people's terms start and so forth. This isn't something that we can just, like, decide to do today and do, you know, two weeks from Thursday. So it would take a lot of, of maneuvering to do it. I think that in some ways, it's a distraction from our being able to govern ourselves as a little village. We are sort of like the nucleus and nucleolae in a cell, Tuckahoe and Bronxville, we are part of the town of Eastchester. And I think it's very important, if we can, to maintain as much of our autonomy as, as we can. One thing I do want to bring up, I mean, I've heard everybody's comments, I think everybody has in their own way a valid point about whether to move or not to move, and the weather and everything. We have got some state election law that's coming up regarding the absentee ballot system, whether there are going to be absentee ballots that we don't have to have a reason, it's a no-excuse absentee ballot. And I think that, as of right now, that it's not really a great idea for us to start thinking about or doing changing the elections to November, until we find out how this is going to go. If we do end up having sort of a universal no-excuse absentee balloting system, it certainly will make it much easier for people to obtain absentee ballots. And I think that would really sort of take the punch out of the fact that, why do we have an election in March, and why don't we have it, you know, why don't we have it in November? The early voting was basically a pilot program, I think it's going to take off, I took part in it. It's a little grueling for the, for the workers, because it's non-street days, and it's long hours and so forth. But, I mean, I do it because I love the village, and because I enjoy doing it. So I, I just think that there are things, there are things to consider along the way, rather than jumping in. But I do think it probably would be a good idea to give some serious thought to having a referendum and letting the people of the village actually make the decision on whether or not to do this. The chips will fall where they may, yea or nay, and I'm not sure we're going to find out how it's going to work out until we actually put it to the people. This is, after all, our democratic process. I will say once more that I'm very much against it, because I do feel that our village will suffer. I think that a lot of our issues will sort of sink beneath the waves. We have a presidential election that really is like none other. The last couple have been important, and they just, they seem to increase exponentially in importance every four years. I'm just not sure this is the time to sort of jump in to change. Change for good reason is fine, change for the sake of change, I'm not really so sure. But I think that we should think about getting it out to the people. I will echo what Mr. Beldecerra said. I have never once, I've lived in Tuckahoe for thirty-five, over thirty-five years, and lived in this area for much longer than I care to admit, and I have never once had any discussion or had any questioning about moving the selection from March. Is the weather sometimes a little sketchy? Well, yeah, sometimes it is. But, you know, the weather can be sketchy in November, too. I remember one snowfall in November that literally stopped the wheels of progress in the entire area.
Please don't remind me.
I don't know.
I was in that.
Yeah.
Please.
I wasn't personally, but my entire family was, and I, I domed my fingers and paced the floor for hours to wait for everybody to get home safely. But anyway, that's, that's sort of where I stand. And it's not just, you know, let's leave it because it's always worked. But I think before we decide to sort of jump in to change, we really need to give this some serious thought. The people who want to move it do have some valid points, I will admit, but those of us who do not, we also have some valid points. And I, I just think we need to talk about this more, we need to think about this more, rather than just saying, oh, well, you know, let's just, let's just do it. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Virginia. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, seeing as we're at that discussion phase, I would just like to make a comment about this discussion that we've had ongoing for the past three months. Please indulge me if I echo what has been said, but this statement has been prepared for a couple of weeks now. Some of it you've already heard, but you're going to hear it in my words. So, as was just said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And that sums up my position on the idea of moving the village elections from March to November. And I say this for several reasons. Has past village boards not represented the residents of Tuckahoe? Members of every major and grassroots party and varied backgrounds have sat on this board. Margaret Coleman was the first African-American woman to sit on this board, and she was an independent. Mayor Mike Martino was a conservative. Mayor John Fitzpatrick was a Democrat. Mayor Steve Ekland was a Republican. Trustees Steve Quigley, Claire Gorman, Ernie Zaki represented the Democrats. Jeanette Hayes, Sheila Clark, Maria McHugh also represented major political parties on the board. And the common thread that united all these elected officials was their keeping the best interest of Tuckahoe at the forefront of their term in office, all at the same time while bringing their special talents to foster the common goals. The residents of Tuckahoe deserve a government that reflects their local concerns and remains focused on village issues. focused on village issues, such as maintaining our police and DPW departments, our infrastructure and traffic issues, future residential and commercial development, looking to make our housing more affordable to seniors and young families. To place our local candidates with our villages' unique and singular issues at the bottom of a November election would do more harm than good to the individual residents of Tuckahoe. The same would hold true for the multitude of campaign literature, election signs, knocking on doors, and social media material that would flood the village, the mailboxes, and personal mobile devices of residents. The venom of national and state politics would take center stage and has no place in our local issues. This past November, seven village elections were uncontested in Westchester. Those villages were Audsley, Croton-on-the-Hudson, Dobbs Ferry, Irvington, Mount Kisco, Austin Village, and Tarrytown. Is this democracy when there are no other choices for the voters to decide upon? It's been put forward that the November election would bring out more voter turnout. It seems like a mild argument when you consider that New York State routinely ranks near the bottom of the country in voter turnout. It placed forty-second in 2018. I have run for office five times going back to 2011, and you've heard this, so I have also have not had one constituent suggest that the village elections be moved. Not once has it been a topic of discussion or part of any campaign literature, regardless of party affiliation. So, why now? Is it an attempt to destroy the multi-party system, much like what happened in the seven villages I just mentioned? Again, I ask, what is the benefit to the residents of Tuckahoe? Do the voters of Tuckahoe want to relinquish what makes Tuckahoe such a special place to live in? Will the average voter stay invested in Tuckahoe issues as national, state, and county issues are being debated? Where will the main focus wind up? I am not ready to take that chance. Cost savings to the village are dramatic since the county handles our local elections. In 2017, we spent $5,131. 2018, the year we handed it over to the village, it cost us $91. And the lost income to our local residents who have consistently worked the election polls would present a financial hardship to them and their families. The direct impact on the many poll workers who live here in the village is another distinct disadvantage to changing the election date. And again, the recent changes to state election law make this the worst time to change our election laws until we have the time to consider the effects of the new law. Right now, voters are guaranteed three hours off to vote. The no-excuse absentee ballot looks certain to pass in the 2020-2021 legislative session, making it a constitutional amendment. There is also a bill that will ensure that when a mover, or when a voter moves elsewhere in the state, their voter registration will go with them. Albany has not addressed if nine-day early voting will be applied to local elections. However, it surely would solidify the argument to allow the elections to remain in March. The bottom line is, all these reforms have made it much easier for everyone to vote. And in closing, I encourage all new residents to familiarize themselves with all facets of village life, just like they do when registering their children for school, finding the good doctors, or dentists, or good places to eat. The same holds true for learning about the workings of our local government and varied boards. In doing so, it truly involves them in the lifestyle that brought them to Tuckahoe in the first place. Thank you for taking the time to listen and indulge me. Is there anyone else on the board? I'd like to offer a comment or comments. Yes?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Trustees of the board, community. My name is Adrian Michelle, excuse me, and I live at 35 Washington Street. And this is one of the first village meetings that I've attended probably in years. I am a resident for over fourteen years, and I listened to a lot of information tonight. Some was very informative, and a lot of it was, to me, I could really appreciate. Because as a resident for fourteen years, I've never voted on a, in March, for any trustees. And when I did even had a conversation about it, it was probably because a friend, a neighbor, said, hey, you got to go vote. And I'm questioning, it's not November, why would I go vote? And they would say, well, so-and-so is running, and this is a friend of so-and-so, or this is a cousin of so-and-so, or this is a childhood friend of so-and-so, and they need your support. And because I trust that neighbor, that friend, I say, okay, I'll consider it. But it's easily to slip the mind if it's not something in the forefront. And our community is evolving. Most of us don't even see our elected officials until the days nearing the election. While the greatest benefit of being a resident in the community, excuse me, while the greatest benefit of being a resident in this community is the control that we have within our government in this village. When we think we are compiled of people who have spent generations here, going to local schools and restaurants, and meeting with friends and families, those people are the ones that's in the know of who is in our government. And while there are people that have been here short-term, four years, twelve years, like myself, fourteen, you just don't know if you don't know. And not to say that it's not my responsibility to get to know who my elected officials are, but sometimes it's just not as easy. And we kind of like let things just, you know, handle it themselves. So, I didn't come prepared to speak, but just, you know, I was moved to speak because I wanted to speak as a resident that's been here for so long and has never voted in a March election, to say that I think that as we evolve, change is not always something we should run away from, and it doesn't have to necessarily be broken to fix it. So, why don't we just consider, you know, who are we serving, and let their voices be heard, which is something that I think you offered to, you said that's what's going to be the end result anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But if I could ask, what is the timeline of having the community's actual input on whether or not March or November is going to be something that is going to be considered?
I don't think I, this has been a discussion that's been ongoing for three months. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, no, it's been an ongoing.
What do you mean, when is?
Right, like.
That will be up to, that will be up either to this board, depending on the decision that this board makes. Obviously, you can tell from my statement that I will not be the person that will put that resolution forward. But that's not to say that it will not be a resolution that will be passed. And again, whether it's voted down or in favor of, it still has to go on the ballot.
Absolutely. My concern is that, just as I found out, and I kind of stumbled across this meeting tonight, to understand the importance of changing a voting date, I would think that there's other people who are just like me, who have been here fourteen, five, seven years, that may not even know that this is an option. And I, you know, I'm pretty interested in finding out, like, how can we move forward to actually get the total community's view? I listened to the gentleman here, when he said he ran for office, and he knocked on a thousand doors. I'd never seen him before. And how many residents do we have in Tuckahoe?
Sixty-five, sixty-six hundred in that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's a small fraction in comparison as to what people really feel and think of, especially considering a lot of our generations, our young families moving in from all over the nation, or city, or county. So, that was just what I, I was moved to say. I may not have, you know, delivered my message concisely, but I wanted to make sure
Loud and clear.
I had a opportunity to share my thoughts and my feelings as a resident here who actually cares about where she lives.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Same to you.
Hi, I just wanted to say one more thing. Again, my name is Cara Cronin, and I live at 88 Maple Avenue. As I'm listening to Mr. Baldassaro, is that correct? Yes. And Mayor Louisi, I, I am hearing what you are both saying about, nobody has said this to you, that you feel like this is a manufactured issue. But I've been here for the last three, four board meetings, and in these last four board meetings, I have heard at least ten people talk about this one particular issue. Different people have come here, left their families at night, to come to talk to you about this specific thing. This is obviously something that's important to some people, and I'm going to reiterate what this Adrian said, because I think it's really powerful, and it's important. In this time where everything is so divisive, politics has gotten so divisive, right, so divisive, that we are feeling constantly against each other, we do need to feel united. I, I never met him either, Mr. Baldassaro, and for that matter, I'm sorry, I never met you. I, nobody's come and knocked on my door to ask me, well, two people have, but you haven't, and that's why I haven't been able to tell you yet. But now, here I am, and I am telling you, this is an issue. This is an issue. That's why people are coming here for months now to tell you that this is an issue. And I'm asking you just to consider it. I understand that you're worried about it. I understand that it's uncomfortable, and that is why we are asking for a referendum. We're not asking you to make the decision. We're asking you to allow other people to make this decision.
It's not up to me to allow this referendum to be put on the ballot.
I hear that. It is up to you to allow, it is up to you to participate in a vote.
Absolutely.
Right. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
You're welcome. If I could just make one comment about the referendum, and we're talking about thirty-five percent of the voters turn out to vote in village elections. If thirty-five percent of the people come out to vote whether for or against to change these elections, I would just want you to consider that, to think that the majority or of the voters of Tuckahoe are not participating in this process.
Perhaps we could vote on it in a November election.
Again, that will be up to the people that are in favor of it.
Just throwing it out there. I also just want to point out, I think it's kind of disingenuous to say that, or suggest that people who move here should find out about these things on their own. We've established at the
Good advice.
We've established at the December hearing that the website mentions almost nothing about, like, the fire board election. If you want to know what's going on, you have to read the newspaper or watch cable television, which most people don't do. And it's not a matter of being lazy or not caring.
Never said that.
Okay. But you are sort of implying that it's the responsibility of each individual person
Absolutely.
to find out this information on their own. And I think it's unreasonable to expect that people would look in the newspaper or watch cable television to find this stuff out. That isn't really how people research things.
Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Oh, I moved here sixteen years ago from the Bronx, and I knew I was moving into a quaint little village. I knew there was village hall, so my husband and I walked down to village hall to see what the village politics were about, to see about our garbage pickup, to see about all the things we didn't have in the city. I moved out of the Bronx for a reason, to come here to, into a quaint little village. I feel that moving the election, I, I don't understand, if we live in a village, and if the election's in March, why can't everybody just go out and vote? That's it. Like, we've been talking about it, and talking about it. Everybody should realize now, the election is in March. It's very important to go out and vote. We have walked the streets. I can't even believe how big Tuckahoe is. When you're walking it by foot, you would not believe. We've knocked on, you may not have seen me, but I've knocked on, we've knocked on a lot of doors. Well, I say a thousand doors? I don't know if it was a thousand. It could have been more than that. You know, just like Bert said, he doesn't know for sure either. But we know because it was freezing, and we did it. And we spoke to a lot of people. We've been in people's houses. We've sat and had coffee with people, and it was an extremely amazing experience for me, and a lot of people got to know me. So, it's whether you were not home that day, or we've gone out several ti, I mean, several times a week, I would say, for hours at a time. So, I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Go ahead. So, I'm not going to tell you what my opinion is of whether we should move the election or not, but what I would like to do is make a resolution to put it before the voters, because I think that is the only way a decision can be made. And as the mayor stated, this board cannot make that decision. So, I'm going to propose a resolution, and just to, I'd like to talk a little bit about it, because sometimes the language of a resolution is very, it's like old-timey, so it can be confusing. So, the purpose of a resolution, and the difference between a resolution and a motion, is a resolution is just a very formal motion, and it usually comes in writing. So, I'm going to pass this out to the board and to our clerk, so she doesn't have to copy that down. Actually, I have one copy. So, to, to start this out, I'm going to do a little bit of a preamble, and what that does is just give some supporting information for the resolution. So, when you hear me say words like "whereas," that's just part of the preamble. When I use the word "resolution," that's the actual motion. So, again, I want to be very specific about this. This motion in plain terms is going to be to allow a referendum to be put to the voters to make a decision about whether or not we should move the election. So, whereas pursuant to law, village law, section nine dash nine-one-two-one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuckahoe may upon its own motion adopt a resolution to hold a referendum on a proposition to change the month of the general village election. And whereas pursuant to election law, section four dash one-oh-eight-B, the Board of Elections must be sent a certified copy of the text of the referendum and a statement of the form in which to be submitted at a general election at least sixty days prior to the general election at which the referendum is submitted. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuckahoe proposed that a referendum be held to change the month of the general village election beginning in the year 2021, from the month of March to the month of November. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuckahoe will comply with the requirements set forth in election law, section four dash one-oh-eight-B. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuckahoe pursuant to village law and election law hereby adopt this resolution authorizing the following mandatory referendum to be submitted at a general election. Resolve that all general village elections of the Village of Tuckahoe shall be held annually on the Tuesday next succeeding the first Monday in November to coincide with the date of the general election as defined in election law, section eight dash one-hundred of the State of New York. And the term of the office of each elected village officer who currently holds such elected office terminate at noon on the first Monday in December of the year in which such term would otherwise expire. And further resolve to request the County of Westchester to include the following proposition on the referendum for consideration by the voters of the Village of Tuckahoe. Shall the general village election of the Village of Tuckahoe be held annually in November rather than March, specifically on the date of the general election as defined in section eight dash one-hundred of the election law of the State of New York. And the term of the office of each elected village officer who currently holds such elected office terminate at noon on the first Monday in December in the year in which the term should otherwise expire. So, that's the language that would be put on the ballot. And further resolve that the polling locations and poll hours will be set by the And further resolved that the polling locations and poll hours will be set by the Westchester County Board of Elections, which is the body that runs our elections. That's the motion.
I second the motion.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Not in favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
Not in favor.
Mayor Luise.
Opposed.
So may I?
Sure, absolutely.
I, like Trustee Howell, was very reluctant to speak about my position on whether or not we should move the election, because I believe that as a board, as elected officials, we stand to gain or lose from making this decision for the residents. And so that's why I am in favor of the residents deciding on whether or not we should move the election, and the chips should fall where they may. Um, I believe that you always want to get the maximum number of voters out. Whether or not we're forty-second on the list of, you know, the, the, the states that, that vote or not, if we're thirty-five percent, if we can get it up to thirty-seven percent, I'm happy. Um, as much as we can do to try to encourage voter turnout, I'm in favor of that. To, to speak to the point that it might seem disingenuous, or it's, it's, there's something behind why this is coming up now, um, I'm a little offended by that, because things change. People change. People are moving in and out of the village, and there are residents that I, whose doors I knocked on, that I didn't hear that from either. But that doesn't mean that there aren't people who are interested, and that the people who are coming forward, then what are their, do they have ulterior motives? I'm not sure where my colleagues are going with that. Um, but I just wanted the, the residents to know that I don't think that this board should make the decision as to whether or not we move the elections, because we stand to gain or lose from it. So that's for you to decide. And that's why I ran for office, because I wanted to give the residents a voice in the decisions that are being made like these. So that's my position.
If I may, I'm not worried about winning, losing, or any of that stuff. I got news for you. Because if I'm, if I never sit up here again, it's not a problem. But I'm going to tell you right now what my position is, and it's very simple. There are people who want to lump our small village of Tuckahoe into national issues by moving our elections to November. Our issues are unique to our village, folks. You have to understand that. This is not the national stage. There's six thousand people. They're very, very unique to our village. Please, you, you guys are, anyway. We do not need to, we do not need some broader issue to have a negative impact on our village and disrupt the harmony that has been in the works for generations. The residents of this village have worked very hard to produce this feel, and it feels great, okay? Let's hold on to it, folks. You guys know what I'm talking about. March elections are more personalized, in tune with your concerns, and most of all, relevant to our unique village. They are something special, something important to small villages like ours. Of course, we will take part and continue to take part in national and state elections, but we want our own light shined, shined upon us, focusing on our own issues in our own village with its own identity. And many reasons why people move to Tuckahoe is for the peace and tranquility a small village has to offer. The feeling of belonging and knowing your neighbors, and knowing your voice will be heard. How dare anyone take that from you? What really concern, concerns me is why our, our board members are addressing this like it's a major problem in the village. This is not a problem, folks. Newsflash, here in our town, we have kids getting hooked on opioids, okay? They, they eat, they eat cigarettes, okay? They're dying from it. These are the problems. Problems like not enough youth programs, okay? Problems like moms trying to pick up their kids, getting from one side of the town to another. That's a problem, okay? Problems are enough parking for our new residents, occupying empty storefronts, getting and retaining new businesses. These are problems. I've heard about when knocking on, I've heard at home when knocking on a hundred doors, no one expressed me that problem. It's quite clear to me, while some folks look, look to solve and address real problems we face in our village, others choose to manufacture them. This is a clear waste of time. We have far greater issues relevant to our village that demand our attention. Thank you very much, and, and I'm quite fed up with it, be perfectly honest with you.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to address the deputy mayor.
It's kind of offensive that people could come and say their opinions and then be yelled at by the board. I think it's outrageous. Also, thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent. I'm glad you feel good. Sixty-five percent are not participating. Six-five.
Ma'am, I can't force anybody to watch the Yankees, okay? I can't force anybody to watch the Knicks. I can't force. People are involved because they like politics. People are involved because that thirty-five percent that you're talking about, we can't, I mean, what am I supposed to do? Hey, come on. These Knicks are great. These Yankees are great. You're going to love baseball. You're going to love football. Either people are into it or they're not.
That's not how it works. Sorry.
Well, I understand.
Deputy Mayor, the, the issues that you brought up, which are very valid issues that, as a board and as a village, we want to address, they're not mutually exclusive. Moving the elections and addressing the issues in the board are not mutually exclusive. They're both important issues because voting impacts the people that you're going to have in office who are going to address those issues. And when we're talking about national issues, um, drowning out local issues, you know, Trustee, um, Howell brought up earlier the issue of bail reform that Umberto brought up, and it, it is impacting us. The, the police department is impacted by the bail reform and the other issues in that reform that we had to ask our elected officials, such as Senator Shelley Mayer, to come and talk to us and try to get us some help to address some of those issues. We're also going to have, um, our assemblywoman come and talk with us. So those national politics that we're saying are going to drown out village issues directly impact village issues. So we need to remember that. And, you know, to someone's point who said earlier, you know, we're getting all emotional about this. This is not an emotional issue for me. This is a logical issue. There are others on the board that are emotional about it. I am not.
Margarita Clement. I didn't make a speech before, and I left out my main idea, and it's redundant because other people have said it. But in my experience of fifteen to twenty years of being an election inspector, everyone in November will be so interested in the presidential election, they won't put the interest that needs to be put for the trustees. They should have their own day. That's all.
Mike Tordano, sixty-two Chester Street. What's happening is we're getting partisan, and people are getting pissed off, and that's not right. Well, how are we going to increase the number of people that vote? Because that directly affects the issues that Danny's talking about. I haven't heard any suggestions about that. I'm kind of hearing, oh, well, it's too bad. I don't think it is. I know that I will personally pledge, whatever the election is, that I'm going to try. I have a lot of connections in social media. I will push out as much election information as I can, because I get it. We're busy. Stuff's going on. I, my own life. I didn't do anything, I, I've been living here since two thousand and one, and I never voted here, which I'm disgusted with myself, until we had the issue on Marbledale Road, and now I participate, and I'm glad I do. And I do think there's a responsibility for our residents. There, there, I know it's not easy to watch cable, because cable can be whatever, but we have to, as a group, figure out how we can get more participation. Okay, if it's not November, then maybe it's a longer election cycle, you know, doing the, having the caucus at the end of January. It doesn't give you a lot of time. Whatever it is, we need more participation. It's better for the village. It's up to us as citizens, and I really appreciate what you had to say. I thought that was excellent, and us as elective, and your elected officials, to try to get more people to participate. And I understand getting upset, whatever, and sure, you could say, well, it's because, you know, the Democrats have more registered Democrats and they want to do it. Things are changing anyways. The whole, Steve Alfasi and I had a talk in November, and he made a great point. He said, I didn't know as many people as I've known in the past during the last election cycle, because we're getting more people here, because Tuckahoe's a really great option to ridiculously expensive Brooklyn or Manhattan. So I think we got to take it down a notch. I don't think people need to get upset. I think people just need to say, you know what? What can we do to increase participation in the village? And it, the early electing, is, election's a good idea, but I do think it should go to the people. And if the people decide not to change it, God bless them. And if they do, that's fine. But I do appreciate everyone's opinion, and I think that was good. And I know people can get emotional over stuff, and I get it, but I think, take that out and just look at it from the standpoint of what's the best direction to increase participation, because then we have more input and then we can do things that people want us to do, or you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, if, yes.
Tom Vishing, Maynard Street. I got a question. I heard thirty-five percent, sixty-five, thirty-five percent to sixty-five percent. What is the number of village residents that don't vote in November? What's the number of village residents that don't vote in the midterm election in November? What's the number of people that don't vote on the odd years that there's not a presidential election? I think those are the numbers we need so we can make a clear choice. Don't just throw thirty-five percent, sixty-five percent, and then make a decision and put a referendum up to vote. If it's thirty-five now and it's thirty-five in November, there's nothing wrong with the system.
Good point.
Our voter turnout and all of those are, are available, all that information is available on the Board of Elections website, and the turnout for, um, uh, general election is considerably more than it is for the March election. I can't give you the exact numbers, but they, but you can find them at the Board of Elections.
Well, again, that would be something that the village would be interested in posting on their website.
We could certainly supply the link.
I mean, because if more people know it, then maybe we need to put it on the, on the ballot. But as far as just saying it's thirty-five, what happens in the, um, interim elections, what happens in November? If it's that drastic, then maybe, maybe we need to put it out there in November. I'm not saying to do it or not do it, but let's look at all the numbers before we do do it.
Thank you, Tom. I, I'm just going to ask if you haven't commented already, now is the time, because I'm going to end this discussion. I think we've, we're going over old ground. I think we've all said what we had to say. Um, so if there's a new voice out there that wants to speak, please, otherwise, I'm going to move on with the rest of the agenda items. I'm only going to take comments from people that have not spoken already. Sorry. Okay. Last person.
I'm actually up here now for a question.
Well, yeah, for clarity. So, what you proposed was the fact to move forward with getting the community's opinion?
Yep, it was for a referendum to be put on a ballot for the villagers to decide.
Right, and that was opposed?
And was voted down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we can, well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. I thank my colleagues on the board. And, uh, we are now going to move on to resolutions, and the resolution number one is authorizing the exemption of all building permit fees for the Tuckahoe Housing Authority in relation to the installation of solar panels on their buildings. Do I have a motion? I have a second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor, and we are just, uh, want to be partners with them in helping to be environmentally correct and, uh, be more efficient in providing energy for their buildings, so that's the reason why we're doing that. Resolution number two is authorizing a carting service, food, waste pickup, and disposal agreement with sand pro-disposal, otherwise known as suburban carting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number three is approving vouchers and the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And at this point in the meeting, it is now time for our departmental reports, and I will call upon Chief John Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I just, um, I, I don't know if you want me to speak about the criminal justice reform at all, or our conversation with Senator Mayer on Thursday evening?
I would touch, I would be more than, I think the residents would be more than happy to hear the, the, the high points of, of that conversation and the whole reform in case-
Just a little background on, on the criminal justice reform that was in, in effect on January first. So the first part is bail reform. So what the bail reform does is only allows for a judge to perform an arraignment and set bail on violent felonies and sex crimes. All misdemeanors, the, the violent felonies of burglary second, which is an invasion of someone's home, and robbery in a second degree, which is forcibly stealing with, while being aided by others, was omitted, uh, from that. So those are two violent felonies that a judge cannot set bail on. Notable crimes that, that were also omitted are the sale of drugs, vehicular manslaughter, criminally negligent homicide, assaults and domestic violence cases. So basically, only the most violent felonies, A-one felonies in the penal code, a judge can set bail, and all other cases, defendants must be set free without bail. A judge may not consider risk to the community, although forty-seven other states do so. Risk of flight can also not be considered by a judge when he does an arraignment. The second part of the bail, of criminal justice reform was discovery. Discovery is for all offenses, including traffic violations up to the most violent felonies. All materials, reports, notes, statements, photos, videos, witness information, lab reports, et cetera, must be turned over to the defense within fifteen days of an arraignment. Although ninety-seven percent of cases are, never go to trial, all of this information still now has to be turned over within fifteen days. Previously, this was only done at time of trial, which means that all of this extra work by police officers, by the labs, by the district attorney's office, is done in ninety-seven percent of cases that are still never going to go to trial. So it's a tremendous burden of manpower and resources to gather all this information, turn it over to the district attorney. District attorney's now turning it over to the defense within fifteen days, although only about three percent go to trial. All victim and witness information must, including contact information for the witnesses and victims, must be turned over to the defense within this fifteen days. Grand jury proceedings are no longer secret, and this will also further expose witnesses to intimidation and witness tampering. Crime scenes may be visited by the defendant when ordered by a judge, so if someone, someone's home is burglarized, they can then go back into the home to reexamine the crime scene. This is all part of the new discovery. Since witness tampering intimidation represents such a threat and such a fundamental threat to rule of law, um, this is so concerning to law enforcement. The cost to date to the village, just to upgrade technology for new, up, new high-speed routers, computers, et cetera, has thus far cost the village about ten thousand dollars. Because all cases that are still pending, we have about fifty criminal cases still pending. It was retroactive as of January first, so it cost us an, an additional fifteen thousand dollars in man-hours just to catch up to, to cases that were still on the calendar as of January first. Going forward, the cost to the village is probably about eight to ten thousand dollars in upkeep of technology to keep this streamlining, as well as over a hundred thousand dollars in man-hour costs. So when we sat down, and I thank, uh, our trustees for asking our Senator Shelley Mayer to come down and speak with us on Thursday evening, she came down from a session in Albany, so special thanks to her for making time for us. us. Our discussion was to talk about all of the things that were concerning to law enforcement and to the impact on our citizens. And some of the things that we asked Senator Mayer to consider is to allow judges to have discretion, to consider the danger to the community in determining a bail amount, to consider risk of reoffending, including prior history of violence, and the risk of flight. And if they recommit a crime while they are out with no bail, that that could be taken into consideration in setting bail moving forward. The senator was very... And, of course, funding for the village. This was probably one of the biggest unfunded mandates coming down from Albany during my tenure. So again, I appreciate Senator Mayer coming down. I know that there's some talk about speaking with Assemblywoman Paulin. It's very important that our elected officials understand the impact to our community, not only from a fiscal point of view, but most importantly, from a public safety point of view. It is very concerning to all of us in law enforcement what these new reforms can mean as far as putting people at risk. So again, I thank the village board for being proactive and getting Senator down here. And, you know, hopefully, some of the suggestions that we proposed will be taken into consideration.
And Chief, I've subsequently spoken to Assemblywoman Amy Paulin, who said that she's already made some proposals to change and scale back on this new laws. So she is... Has offered to come and speak to the board, so I'll speak to the mayor about possibly having her come in February.
It's very important. I mean, if you look at some of the... I mean, some of the headlines certainly are sensationalized. However, if you look at some of the reports that have come down just since January first about people who have committed assaults, been released, and then came back the next day and recommitted that type of crime. If you talk about people who are released on some very serious charges, including bank robberies and such, and then released and then recommitting within moments, again, going back and passing a note to a teller and robbing a bank again and again, just even more locally in the city of Yonkers, they had the same defendant arrested four times in four days. So the part of recidivism is so important to us and public safety. Certainly, everyone across the board on the law enforcement side agrees criminal justice reform was needed and necessary. However, it is our belief that the pendulum swung too far. So we're trying to get it back closer to the middle. That would be creating a safer environment for our residents. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Frank DiMarco. Not bringing any snow with you, are you?
You know, the less I talk about snow, the less we get.
I see that.
I'm not going to mention anything about it. But now that you mentioned the snow, but most importantly, no. No, I just want to... I want to welcome the two appointed ladies today. Kayla McCrinch... McCrink from the Tuckahoe High School and Maria Capasso from Eastchester High School. And these two individuals are going to take a big part on the Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee. We're going to be sharing a lot of our thoughts together and hopefully be a big part of all our future initiatives. But I just want to also clarify once again, you know, people are always asking me, this new committee, haven't we done initiatives over the years? We've been a big part... We've been in the forefront of sustainable environmental initiatives many years. And I just want to give credit to those committees that have been a big part of that over the years, that weren't called to Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee. But I do believe that this new committee will take us to a new threshold, and I'm all excited about that. So I just want to, you know, inform everybody about this new committee. If you want to look up a little bit more about it, you get the Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability website. You could also find that website on our Tuckahoe website. If you go on the Department of Public Works, Food Scrap Recycling, that'll take you right to the website. Any questions, anybody could feel free to email me as well. But I also want to bring to light that food scrap recycling has started as of January first, 2020. Realistically, it started probably November first. People have... Were so excited about the initiative that they started bringing food scrap over to the drop-off site, which is Fifteen Marble Dale Road, the DPW facility. The drop-off there is voluntary. It's available twenty-four seven, and I please, I ask people to take a big part in this new initiative. It's really been taken off. We sold quite a few kits thus far, and people are really taking to this initiative. That's all I really have to say. As far as snow, we're not getting any.
Okay, good. That's good to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I'd just like to plug this new food scrap program. I am fully vested in it, and I have to tell you, it does not smell. It's incredible. And I've put eggs, coffee grinds, chicken bones, pork bones. I put everything in there, so... No diapers. No, I'm out of diapers.
Celery.
Celery. But you know, and we've talked about this, is when I look now in my kitchen garbage pail, it's empty because everything's in the recyclable pail. I mean, obviously, there's food wrappings in there that can't be recycled, but it's really an amazing program, so...
Forty percent of our waste is...
Yeah, you're hearing it from the mayor. It doesn't smell.
Doesn't even smell...
Doesn't smell.
Then we're holding everybody else's scrap for one whole week. But thank you.
Thank you. Camille, do we have anything this evening? See, I remembered this time. Our village attorney, Gary Gersten. And that will bring us... That will bring us to our village administrator, David Burke.
Actually, I don't have much to say. I just wanted to let everybody know we had a report on the audit tonight. It is on the village website. It's on there. There's a lot of stuff in here. I think the village should be proud about what's in here. The department has did a fantastic job. Big thanks to village treasurer, Ryan Rueda, hours upon hours that he needed to sit with auditors to put this together. So he gets a big thanks on this as well, but just the collective effort of everyone, and we all should be proud of this.
Great, thank you. And that'll bring us to miscellaneous business. There would be a presentation on January twenty-third at 7:00 PM at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And this presentation will be sponsored by the Sustainable Westchester Community Choice Aggregation Program. And that will be January twenty-third, 7:00 PM at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And what that's going to be about is the village board may or may not decide on involving ourselves in this program, and by doing so, every resident in Tuckahoe will then be part of this energy consortium, if you will. And then you would have to opt out if you didn't want to be part of that. It will be televised if you can't make it. So again, Tuckahoe Community Center, January twenty-third, 7:00 PM. No, we're going to tape it. Did I say live? I'm sorry. It's going to be taped, so it'll be on future broadcasts, yes. And then our next village board meeting will be held on February tenth, 2020, right here at 7:00 PM. And that will now bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and I'll start with trustee Omira Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I will try to shorten my report, but I was asked by the Environmental Committee Chair, Donald Crosby, to report on a few things. I think Frank touched on, we have the operational website, which is T E S C, which stands for Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee-Tuckahoe.org. You can go on there and enter your email address if you want to get information at the homepage, where it says, "Follow Us" in that section. You'll be informed of news and events regarding TESC, and there are other sections that you can see, Village Gardens, Educational Resources, and you can contact us with questions. There's also Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committees on Facebook and Twitter. And we are also investigating keeping beehives in Tuckahoe. We have the food scrap we've spoken about and the Sustainable Westchester coming out. I also would like to reiterate, congratulations to Maria and Kaylee for joining us. Erin, you're no longer the new kid on the block. So I just want to also let people know that the ECAP will be having its thirty-fifth annual Martin Luther King Breakfast on Monday, January twentieth. We encourage everyone to come out. Our theme this year, which is very appropriate, is "Our Unity Is Our Strength." So we ask people to come out and join with us. We will have a keynote speaker. His name is Dr. Jeff Gardier. If any of you have ever watched, he's a TV personality, psychologist, and author, and he'll come out and talk to us about unity. Our honorees will be the Bronxville Junior... I don't know why it's escaping me right now. The Bronxville Junior League. Local resident Lovely Billups will receive the Civil Rights Pioneer Award, and an ECAP Advisory Council member... Board member will be receiving the community award for this year. Just briefly on the library events going on this month for the children, there will be a bilingual Mandarin Storytime, actually tomorrow at four o'clock for ages four to ten. The chess club will meet on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, January fifteenth. There'll be movie night, Toy Story Four on December... On the twenty-ninth, January twenty-ninth at four for ages six and up. And for adults, the book club will be having a discussion on Beer Town by Frederick Bachman on January twenty-second at 6:30 and January twenty-fifth at 11:30. And a very important Census 101 and Job Information Session on January twenty-seventh at 6:30. A Dr. Owen Borda, Partner Specialist from the Census Bureau, will be there to discuss the timeline and benefits, as well as job opportunities with the Census. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The History Committee celebrates twenty years of serving its mission to uncover, preserve, and share its rich history of Tuckahoe. Twenty nineteen was a busy year. We worked on most... We work on most Wednesdays from nine to one to research, receive, catalog, and index new photos, artifacts, and information, as well as field questions from interested parties. Our outreach included tabling and talks with PowerPoint presentations at civic groups, meetings, as well as in-house tours of the Mini Marble Museum. They continue to assist visitors who seek information about their family members and/or businesses and schools, and continue to offer visitors a packet of information and a small piece of Tuckahoe marble when they stop by. They also encourage residents and former residents to add to their collection, and that's it for the history. I also want to mention that we had a recent grand opening, and we want to welcome Rise and Grind to the village. They are a baseball training facility on Marble Dale Road, and we look forward to them producing some good ballplayers. Perhaps the thirty-five percent. So we wish them luck. Another reminder, I just want to also remind about the MLK Breakfast again. It's at 9:00 AM at the Reform Church, and it's a wonderful... Wonderful event. Everybody should join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Howell?
The next planning board meeting is set for January twenty-first. There's only two items on the agenda. One is revisiting the fitness studio proposed at fourteen to sixteen Columbus, and then a new site plan will be on the agenda for sixty-eight Marble Dale for a warehouse and storage facility for a company that houses diving equipment. The zoning board meeting happened on January eighth, so that's available on YouTube. The next one is scheduled for February twelfth. The agenda's not yet available, but you have till January twenty-eighth to submit for agenda. Just a couple of community announcements. The Eastchester High School PTA will be on January twenty-eighth in the evening at 7:00 PM in the high school library, running a session by our school board member, Sally Veltidi, and she will be there giving an information session for anybody who is interested in running for the Eastchester School Board. She'll tell you all about how to go about that. In addition, the PTA will be giving information on how we're going to lobby during the February tenth session in Albany for more school funding. And so again, that's a joint effort between the Eastchester and Tuckahoe School Districts, so go democracy. And then another event that's really exciting is the Harlem Wizards will be at Eastchester High School in support of the Eastchester School Foundation on Friday, January twenty-fourth at 7:00 PM. And the Eastchester Irish American Social Club asked me to remind everyone that dues are due. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Trustee Lee?
Good evening. I just want to talk about the Senior Citizen Center. Last week, last Thursday, Damon Marr had paid a visit. Very informative meeting with our seniors. Tomorrow, there is a Con Ed Energy Program for seniors taking place at 11:30 in the morning. And we have a very important... Very important day on Tuesday, January twenty-second. One of our senior citizens, Angela Mondello, will be turning one hundred years old. She is such a beautiful woman, we should all hope we are as energetic and sharp as Angela at her age. She always watches our meetings, so let's wish her a very happy birthday. And Mayor, give her a nice big smile, because she knows... We know she loves that. She actually always comments on his smile.
Or lack of.
Or lack of smile on TV. On the twenty-third, there's going to be a luncheon for her, and Mayor Luise will present her with a proclamation. And that's the twenty-third.
January twenty-third.
Yeah, Thursday. Also, as the liaison to the Tuckahoe Community Center, I am thrilled to report the following rental income paid to our village last year by our recreation attendant, John Galuzzi. This income amount was the result of 2019 bookings, the Tuckahoe Community Center rentals, which includes village events, parties, meetings, community programs. There were one hundred and thirty-one birthday parties booked, bringing in twenty-two thousand dollars. Sports and community-based programs renting the community center, bringing in nine thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. The vending drink machine brought in six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. The total amount of income produced by the community center rentals in 2019 paid the village of Tuckahoe thirty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. We cannot thank John Galuzzi enough for all his hard work and dedication. And that's all I have for tonight.
That's great. Thank you, Trustee Lee. I will keep my comments short. I still am maintaining open office hours on Wednesday, every Wednesday, from ten o'clock on. I invite everyone to come up and see the new paint job, thanks to the film production company that was here in December. I'm the only one elected to keep the color the same as it was used in the shoot, but that's... We could talk about that when you come up to the office. But on a more serious note, you know, we are dealing with this... With these infrastructure issues on Main Street, Winter Hill. I thank the superintendent again for diverting that water wherever it's coming from on Winter Hill. I know it's created some pretty dangerous conditions when the weather goes below freezing, but as of right now, I see whatever you've done, that water is diverted, and I believe we're still talking with Suez to remedy this situation. Con Ed project on Main Street, I think, is still going exceedingly well, all things being considered. Yes, Main Street is still a minefield in terms of having to drive your vehicle, motorcycle, or bike over it. Exit Three on the Bronx River Parkway, which you've been hearing me talk about for well over a year now, is fully paved, and so you can get on and off either direction, and they are doing, I have to say, a really fantastic job of putting up the stone facing on either side of the bridge, so it looks really, really good. And that's all I have, everyone. So at this point, it is the second opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any item or any subject.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
Trustee. My name's Anthony Laurie. I've been in this community seventy-one years, born here. My birth certificate does not read any other thing but Tuckahoe. Doesn't read the Bronx, Brooklyn, Queens, Nurexel, Mount Vernon, and Tuckahoe. And what I'm here to say, I'm a very angry man. And what I'm here to say, I'm a very angry man. I'm here to let you know that I lost the election for Board of Fire Commissioners because it was all orchestrated lies and false statements by Dennis Winters, picked up by Ms. Howell, the Democrat Party, statements that were made against me, the Mayor of Bronxville, Michael Denning, all those people. We have elected a man who's only been in the community 23 years. I've been a volunteer for 47 years. Where were these people when Yonkers was burning down, and they used to call the Tocco Ho's Company two to three times a month? There's other volunteers in the back. We used to jump on the rig, go there, stay there four, five o'clock in the morning, come back six, 6:30, get ourselves, go to work, do other community services, volunteering, stuff like that. And all these people praised one person for being in the community 23 years. The man done a wonderful job. I never saw him at one fire commissioner meeting, never saw him walk in one firehouse. And this is the thanks I got from the people. Not so much from Tocco. Tocco, I won all the other, I won all the other polls but Bronxville. And I think that's a shame, really a shame from a person who's put all his community time into this village, went to war for this community and my country, served 23 years active time and National Guard time. And I really feel hurt for comments that people made from me that were not true. All orchestrated by Dennis Winters, and people picked up on it. Called me a racist, says I don't like black people. I don't like lady, white firefighters. All lies, and people picked up on it. The Democrat Party says the man was a great man. I don't think he knew either one of us, the Democrat Party. And it's a shame. It really is a shame. Danny, I commend you on the way you spoke tonight. You are great, believe me. It's a shame to see that one person could do so much, one person can move in here, like you say, not long, and not even know nothing about the fire department. And this is the thanks we get for the people. I tell you the truth now, and I tell you right here. If anything has to be done with the trolley, if you still have me as the driver, and it has to go to Bronxville, get yourself somebody else to drive for Bronxville. I wouldn't do nothing for that community. I really am hurt, and I came to your office also, Mayor. I told you all about it. I told you a little worse than what I'm speaking now. But it just, it's on my mind, and I have to speak about it. And I just don't like lies. I want my name cleared. I'm not a racist. I have nothing against black people. I have nothing against white ladies, nothing. I went to school here, Catholic school here, public school in this community. I did my time in this community. And I really feel hurt the way other people slandered me, especially the Democrat Party don't even know me. Wouldn't know me if I walked right by them. And then I got hurt. Ms. Howell, I could just tell you, save yourself a few steps. You won't have to ring my doorbell next March. Really hurts. You put something on the email, too.
Mr. Laurie.
Yes, you did. Don't say you didn't. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just say one thing, Mr. Laurie, I hope you reconsider what you said about driving for Bronxville because...
No, I will not.
Okay, well then, I'll take that into consideration.
I'm telling you the truth. I'm not lying to you, Mr. Mayor. I'm telling you the truth.
Neither am I. I don't wish you to see, to take that, whatever it is, out on the...
It's a very hurting feeling because one man, what one man did, everybody picked up on it and orchestrated on it. And I'm just here to clear my name. I have a good record in this community. I've been here all my life. I've been in the VFW since 1972. I've been in the American Legion's over close to 10 years, and I don't need nobody to slander me because my name's good name. In all this community, you could ask anybody in church services, community services, Veterans Affairs, and volunteer, anywhere else that they ask me to do, I did it.
Absolutely. And even more of a reason why I think you should reconsider driving into Bronxville to maintain that reputation that you now have. Anyone else?
Neighbor, one way, Sagamore Road. I just want to respond to it. First of all, thank you for your service. And I want to reiterate what I reiterated to you, which was none of that was ever said about you from the Democratic Party. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tom Bishy again, Maynard Street. I don't think it was the, I shouldn't say that. We did have a turnout. There was a email or text or something. I'm not a Democrat, so I wasn't privy to it. I happened to read it, third party. It endorsed a candidate that's not a village resident. Okay? That's my problem. Anthony Laurie is a village resident, did five years on the Board of Fire Commissioners, and did an outstanding job. He's been a 46-year member of the Tocco Ho's Company right back here. This firehouse was proposed to be closed, and he ran as our representative from the village to the town board of fire commissioners. What I don't understand is that the village residents would opt to vote for somebody not representing the village on a town board. But yet you look at the supervisor and the town councilman, we have a resident representing us on that board. But yet we have a Board of Fire Commissioners that's supposed to represent us, that is, we don't have a representative because political parties sent out an email supporting another candidate, which is fine. On the Board of Fire Commissioners, political parties have no business being there. It's not like a local election, not a state election, not a government, Washington DC thing. It's not about Democrats and Republicans, yackity-yackety and fighting and all that nonsense. This is about providing a very valuable service to our community and an $18 million budget that they have to send on. Now we're sitting here with no representation on that board. Who's going to fight for us when they look to close this firehouse when the new ladder truck comes and it doesn't fit in the firehouse? What are we going to do? Has anybody looked and seen the building that has gone on in this village from Midland Avenue to Fairview Avenue up and down Main Street? Hey, you closed this firehouse, and their big proponent was, oh, we got a firehouse a half a mile away. Anybody that knows anything about this village or has been here a long time knows that the traffic in this village is absolutely horrendous. Whether you have an 80,000-pound fire truck with all kinds of red lights and sirens, you will not get through this village. And not having a piece of apparatus in this firehouse is going to be a very bad thing not to have. And not to have our, one of our residents representatives on that board is a travesty.
That's a very good point, and I just want to let people know that they too can show up at the Fire Commissioner Board of Hearing, as I did last year in defense of Mr. Laurie, who is trying to keep that station here. So that's another way you can get involved.
Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Board, my name is Liz White. I'm a Tocco Ho employee. I'm here with several of my coworkers. We work at AI Design on Marbledale Road. We're here this evening because we were not aware last year when you were holding the public hearing for the Marbledale Road new design guidelines. In the past weeks, since the new parking went into effect, we've been catching up and reading the guidelines and watching some of your board meetings to get up to speed. So we understand from the Marbledale Guidelines that the primary function is to enhance this corridor with more of an overall design language and create a more attractive pedestrian environment and to facilitate a more comprehensive parking plan that prioritizes short-term parking and also addresses the increase of communal parking. But we, as Tocco Ho employees, are in neither of those categories. We are not commuters who take a train to spend our days working at businesses outside of Tocco Ho. We come to Tocco Ho. We work for a Tocco Ho small business. We take a lot of pride in it. At lunchtime every day, we go and spend money at local Tocco Ho businesses. And now, if we have to spend $5.55 a day on parking, it actually makes it more difficult to also go out for lunch. In fact, I may bring lunch to work in order to offset that. This does add up over the course of 50 weeks of workdays to about just shy of $1,400 of net, which equivalent to about a 2K from salary. In the guidelines and in your board meetings, it's been emphasized that the parking along Marbledale should prioritize short-term parking. And the guidelines also mention that long-term parking for employees of Marbledale businesses should be accommodated on-site by property. However, the guidelines also recognize that there may be exceptions to how much on-site parking some properties can supply. It mentions that parcels on the west side have more depth. We are on the east with less depth. And it mentions that the Planning Board can potentially provide some relief from parking or setback requirements as needed to be decided on a case-by-case basis. So we're here this evening to appeal to you on those grounds. Due to the nature of our business, which is an automotive customization shop, even though there is some room on our property, it's essential to our business to prioritize the parking of our customers' vehicles. That's first and foremost with the ability to frequently move clients' vehicles throughout the course of the day. If an employee's car impedes that ability, it's a problem for our business owner. Additionally, we have attempted to fit more employee vehicles on-site after the long-term parking started, but it has in fact curtailed our flow of business. And that, that is something that will fluctuate depending on the flow of our business. And it poses a risk if anything were to happen to a client vehicle as well. While there is, we are 10 employees, and the impact of this new parking on our day-to-day business and then the cost to us individually is fairly significant to us. But within the larger scheme of overall village parking, we are a small number. Mayor Louisi, we saw that you had mentioned in the September Board meeting that this is one of those proposals that once it is enacted, it may be possible to go back and re-tweak it.
That's correct.
The guidelines also stipulate that there may be exceptions that the Planning Board can address on a site-by-site basis. One idea we wanted to propose is based on the residential parking stickers that are issued by the village to waive the short-term parking requirements in some places. I believe on Rogers Street near our location, this is one of those locations. We were wondering, could a similar type of parking sticker be issued by the village specifically to eligible employees on a village and planning board-approved basis to waive the parking requirements for stickered vehicles, especially if it's solely specified to one of the zones, such as the 612 MDLT where we're located? This seems like it would require little change to the actual new parking infrastructure overall that you've implemented, and it would not affect any of the short-term spots. An added benefit would be, last resort to us, of parking tickets, which we've also gotten since the parking was enacted. I believe four of us have already gotten tickets. And in the case of mine personally, it was a morning where I also paid for parking. So I got out of my car, I went into the shop, I got a cup of coffee, I sat at my desk, and then I remembered, oh, I have to turn on the pango. And when I got out to my car that evening, I also had a ticket. So my parking that day was $35.50. So we just wanted to come and see if there's anything we can do, find out what the next steps would be and how we can pursue this in the most appropriate method and through the right process. We take a lot of pride in working in Tocco Ho. We like the village very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Arditi. I actually own a business, 60 Marbledale Road. Been there for the last 12 years. We purchased the property a little over a dozen years ago, and specifically, I'm here for this reason, this parking issue. Nobody was made aware when the board was planning any improvements for Marbledale Road. I'd first like to say that I would think in a town of this size that I've been part of my whole life. I grew up in Crestwood. I worked here, and I worked in Carvel when I was little. I've been through this town for my whole life. I would think that a town of this size, when they plan developments, renovations, upkeeps, especially when it comes to local businesses, when it affects those businesses, that you would take some, some step in communicating to the local business owners that we're going to do something that's going to affect you. In my case, the five or six employees I have. In Matt's case, the 10 employees he has. And for one of our tenants, another six or seven employees. We represent a really small section of Marbledale Road, but we pay quite a bit to be there to start off with. We chose to keep our businesses based in Tocco Ho because it's Tocco Ho. We want to be here. Collectively, I can tell you that as the business owner, and Matt had to leave, he owns AI Design for, they actually work for him. This is one of my employees here. As a business owner, when the signs started going up, because we weren't aware any of this was actually happening, the signs started going up, we were faced with, do we now pay all of our employees parking? So whether the burden is placed on our employees directly, which I don't think is fair. They came to work in a village that, many years ago, some of these guys have worked for AI Design for over 20 years. That's a long time. They're used to the environment. We looked, somebody's being charged the money, is basically what I'm getting to for one point. As a business owner, we have to decide whether or not we're going to take on the burden off our employees because the village decided not to consult anybody before the decisions were made and just plan as they will. So that's one thing to think about. The, one or two other points I'd like to make are, if the objective on Marbledale Road was to make short-term parking more the thing, I mean, is that, am I hearing that correctly? That was what you guys sought to do when you planned what you did here?
It's a combination. It was a combination of the two.
Combination of the two. So I would think that, just in general, I mean, Marbledale Road is a totally different commercial zone. The businesses that have been there, very, very different than what you see on Main Street or through Depot Square. Very different. We're not looking to have people rotate in and out of parking spaces so somebody can run into a florist or grab ice cream from Carvel. That's not what anybody does on Marbledale Road. It's been like that for as long as I can remember. I don't think that that was considered when the board sat down and decided to plan for us, our environment. I don't think that was taken into consideration. I do know also that you were looking to curtail people coming in from other areas and utilizing Tocco Ho streets to park just for the commute. I can tell you that when the parking went up a couple of weeks ago, everybody vacated, every one of us. Nobody parked on the street. We took all of our vehicles, we moved every one of them, packed them as tightly as we could. We could not do any business. And nobody took our spots. So you want to leave all of Marbledale open... So, there is a, I think, a decision that the board needs to make, and that's, who do you value more? The local businesses that have been here for dozens of years, who provide economy for the village itself, who provide an enormous amount of tax dollars for the village? Or do we want to look to leave those spots open, tax the local businesses, because that's really what's happening? And if we decide not to pay it, or find some sort of alternative that, again, like she said, affects our business, because we park our commercial vans on our property, if everybody had to park, which we've experienced just recently, everybody had to squeeze all the cars into the parking lot, we can't maneuver. Business can't get done. It really is a liability, especially for, in particular, AI Design, just because of what they do for a living. I would like to know if there's any way that, like was mentioned, there is some way to work out a parking permit situation, maybe perhaps go back and take a look at the businesses that you affected, and reconsider some alternative to the parking? Because I can tell you, our moving left wide-open parking all over Marbledale Road. Nobody was there. As soon as the signs went up and the meters went in, we were told, you know, these, these are going up, you have to start paying. The entire block, it was like everybody, nobody came to work anymore. But that's, that's not going to stay that way. You're going to invite, you're going to invite people who don't do business here, who don't work here, into the village to park for $5 a day. And then the people that do support the village, we're going to have a bigger problem. So, I, I, I would hope that it's something that the board could put on for a meeting to sit down and, I mean, an opportunity where, we're all aware now that this happened. You know, we operate just like everybody else. We do what we do all day. We don't necessarily pay attention to all the planning that's going on and all the things that are being built around us, but when it affects us, we, we wake up. So, we're aware now, and we're here, and we're willing to talk to you, and if you're willing to work something out with us, we would love it.
Absolutely. I think it's worthy of a conversation that we'll have as a board.
Okay. So, this will be put on for some other meeting, discussion, I mean...
We'll start off informally, and then we'll probably take this up at our next work session.
Okay.
Which will be in February.
Is there any way that the board could have the town, at least in the interim, until this is handled, stop writing tickets?
As long as there is an existing traffic ordinance, I cannot tell the police department not to do their job, or the parking enforcement officer either.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Well, with no further business, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a pleasant evening.